Well, good afternoon. We're two-thirds of the way there. We have a quorum. And Frank just called me and he's, you'll be 20 minutes late. And so we think we have plenty to talk about prior to him coming. So we're electing to go ahead right now. Welcome to all of you to this town hall forum with our two out of three legislators, a third to come from the 43rd district, who will be discussing the coming 2024 legislative session with us. This forum is sponsored by the First Hill Unit of the League of Women Voters and by the Environment Committee of Horizon House. I'm Bill Roach, and I'm the Chair of the Environment Committee and will be the host for this afternoon's forum. I also want to call attention to the fact that there's a town hall buffet after this, and you're all certainly invited to join in the terrace dining room. But before we hear our legislators, I want to tell you that at the end of today's program, two residents will be at a table here, actually, they're there now, in front of the other, in front, offering specific opportunities for citizen engagement. Mary Margaret Pruitt is here to tell you about joining the League of Women Voters. And Carol Roach from the Environment Committee will be welcoming sign-ups to give you the opportunity to easily express your opinion before the legislature in 2024. It's a practice that we have done in the past, and it's been very effective. And we're hoping we can continue that this year. But it would be helpful if you could sign up. I manage that piece, and we try to make it as simple as we can in this electronic age. It's my honor to introduce Senator Peterson, Representative McCray, and soon Frank Chopp, all of whom have extensive experience representing us in Olympia. We will hear from all three and then open the floor to questions. Maybe that's Frank. That was Frank. He is, there is a student protest on the University Bridge. It's blocking him from coming. But he'll be here eventually. So we will continue. I mean, this is not quite like last year when we had an ice storm, and there's only one of us here. So, but it is what it is, and let's keep going. Senator Peterson has been our senator for the last 10 years and was elected Senate Majority Floor Leader in 2021. He also serves on the Ways and Means Committee, Law and Justice, Rules and Early Learning, and K-12 Education Committees. I might add that he has four boys who attend Seattle Public Schools. So he has a real vested interest in this. He also serves as General Counsel to McKinstry, a Seattle engineering firm with a focus on green building. So we'll start with Senator Peterson.
Wow, I was going to try to pawn it off on Nicole to go first. It is a delight to be back with you. I was here a month ago to talk about a different set of topics, but we're really happy to be back here for a legislative forum. This is one of the things that I look forward to every year. And it is a great privilege for us to have such an incredibly engaged, interested group of constituents who will turn out and listen to us go on about the work that we are very passionate about doing in Olympia. So yeah, it's funny. I had to faint and duck for Frank today because I spent my morning at Hamilton International Middle School up in Wallingford, teaching some eighth graders about the state government. I had, I think, three of the U.S. history classes. And then Frank was supposed to take the fourth one, and he wasn't there yet. So I talked about him for about 10 minutes, and then he showed up, and it was all fine. I teased him a little bit because, you know, he lives about six blocks from Hamilton. So he, so there isn't really any good excuse for being late. But now if he was having to come across the ship canal, then I guess there's a decent reason for being late. So we are headed into a short session coming up. And, you know, I think in many ways it's likely to be less momentous, less tumultuous than the last few sessions. Our operating budget has a little bit of extra money in it, but is roughly in balance. So we'll have the ability to do a few small things. But on the one hand, we don't need to make dramatic changes to it. And on the other hand, depending on how you look at it, we can't make dramatic changes to it. We are in rough balance on the capital budget, so there's a little bit of money to spend, not very much. And the transportation budget is a little bit of a mess. That's going to be, that's going to be a topic of significant interest, particularly for us in the 43rd, because the project that is, or one of the projects that is most underwater is the 520 rebuild. And there are real questions between the House and the Senate about how to fund that, whether to fund that, whether to kick it off into the future. I personally am horrified by the idea of kicking it off into the future, partly because the folks at Wash dot tell us that if we wait and don't get it funded now, it's going to cost a billion dollars more than the already more that it's supposed to cost. And partly because, you know, Nicole has had this for the last seven years, for me for the last 18 years. I have represented these poor people down in Montlake who have been living in the middle of a construction project that it just never seems to end. So what I want desperately for them is for that project to get finished and for them to be able to resume quiet enjoyment of their property. So those are sort of the big budget pictures. I would say in terms of policy issues, the shadow looming over everything that we do is that there are these six initiatives to the legislature that have been filed. Now, I think they just turned in today the signatures on a third of them. And the rumor is that they have the signatures or will have the signatures on all six. So a lot of the work that we've done over the last few years is going to be up for grabs, depending on, you know, what people had for breakfast in a year from, a year from now or next November. And that's everything from the long-term care program that we set up to the capital gains tax, to the Climate Commitment Act, which is the first, the first set of signatures that the opponents turned in. It's all, the one that they turned in today was about police pursuits, trying to roll back the reforms that we did there. They, Tuesday, they turned in one that they call the Parental Bill of Rights, which is essentially a way to interfere with what's going on in public schools for people who don't like the sex education curriculum or whatever. Never mind that the voters have already voted on that and approved it. But anyway, so, you know, that's going to be sort of hanging over our heads all session as we try to do our work. You know, in part because we're making really big and important investments right now with the Climate Commitment Act. And to think that those, that that funding stream might be cut off entirely is very disappointing, given what we are facing as a world in terms of carbon and the leadership role that Washington State has been playing for a lot of other jurisdictions in terms of trying to point a way to a world that doesn't get engulfed in flames and floods. So anyway, there is also, and I'll let my seatmates, who are the experts in the legislature, among all 147 of us on housing issues, talk about the urgent crisis that we face in that way. But that will be, you know, some people called 2023 the Year of Housing in the legislature. I think that 2024 is likely to be an extension of that because we can see all around us the tragedy of unsheltered homelessness and all of the side effects that come from that when people don't have their basic human needs met. So we'll be trying to, trying to continue that work. I will say, let's see, is there anything super exciting? One, one more piece that I guess, just for your awareness, this probably isn't a, probably isn't a matter that is super interesting to most people outside of the legislature, but just have some compassion on us. We are likely to be twisted up in some amounts of knots because two years ago, we authorized legislative employees to collectively bargain. And this year, we need, we commissioned a study to figure out how to make that happen. And this year, that report that we commissioned has been delivered back to us. And the Republicans who didn't want this to happen at all will be sitting gleefully watching us argue amongst ourselves and see if we can come up with a majority for the, for the policies that will allow that to happen. I personally think it's great. There's no reason why the legislative employees shouldn't be able to band together and come to work with us. I work outside of the legislature in a business that has roughly 1,500 represented employees. And we have fantastic relationships with our, with our union partners. And it helps, it really helps everybody, I think, to have a high agreed-on floor for how we relate to our employees. But I think it's also the case that it's almost always rocky for employers to get that started. And so we're going to have a lot of discussions. Because there are some very complicated issues about who should be in the bargaining unit. The partisan staff are the ones who are the main agitators for collective bargaining. But what do you do with the nonpartisan folks? They, in the surveys, didn't want to be represented. They didn't even want to have the option, partly because they are very fearful that however they choose, whether they choose to be represented or choose not to be represented, it's going to be held against them as a partisan thing by legislators of one party or the other. So anyway, that's, that's going to be a complicated set of issues for us to deal with as well. I'm going to turn it over to Nicole, but I really look forward to your questions and to the conversation. I always find it very stimulating to hear what is on the minds of people who are very engaged in these issues. Thank you very much.
Well, Representative, we're lucky to have Representative Nicole McCray to represent us since 2016. She serves as the Vice Chair of the Appropriations Committee and also serves on the Health Care and Wellness Committee and is the Co-Chair of the LBGQ Caucus. She also serves as the Deputy Director of the Downtown Emergency Service Center. So she is well-grounded in the work that she's, that she's in in the legislature. So Representative Nicole.
Thanks so much, Bill. And hi, everyone. It's great to be here. We always know legislative session is coming up when we get that call from Horizon House about coming by to do a little forum and preview for session. Jamie covered a good, I think, a really great overview of what we're heading into. You know, it's interesting because the last five years in a lot of ways have been unusual. Democrats retook the majority in the Senate in 2018. And we got to work really quickly in enacting lots of things that folks here and folks in our district care a lot about. And we're seeing a little bit of that, I think, backlash reaction with these initiatives that Jamie mentioned, that we have done a lot of good things for the people of Washington with Democrats in control of both chambers and the governor's office and without the ability to get those electoral wins, to get more conservative, conservative representation in the legislature. Some very small group of folks are exploiting our initiative process in order to pay folks to collect those signatures. That is what the process is, what we've seen in recent years, is that it really is an endeavor in fundraising. So if you raise enough money, you can hire the signature gatherers to get those initiatives on the ballot. In the last few years with the pandemic, we hadn't really seen a lot. It was really the first time in Washington State history where we hadn't really seen a lot of statewide initiatives on the ballot. And we may see a good number of them this, this coming election. So that'll be interesting. I want to echo what Jamie says. We anticipate that this will be a bit more subdued session than these last five years, especially coming out of the pandemic. We received, we were fortunate, as all states were, to receive significant COVID relief dollars from the federal government in 2021 and 2022. And so we saw really significant activity in increasing state investments to ensure stability across the state. And we were fortunate last year, as the Washington economy remains strong, to be able to make a number of excellent investments in our public schools and higher education and in our workforce, both our public employees, but in all of our helping professions. We knew that our long-term care systems, our hospital workers, our teachers, childcare workers, our behavioral health workers were all struggling. And we were able to make investments in stabilizing the workforce in all of those sectors. And with the passage of the Climate Commitment Act a couple of years ago, we were able to make those first investments, appropriate those dollars as those auctions for those carbon credits were going on. So we were able to make very sizable investments in climate resiliency across the state. Going into this session, as Jamie said, we're, we, it's really a tune-up year. The budget is kind of in a steady state. It's a biennial budget, a two-year budget. So we're really, we call it a supplemental year. And so we'll make some minor adjustments. I think our intent is going to be to stay the course on the investments we've already made. The governor's budget proposal came out yesterday. And I think his priorities are fairly aligned with Democrats in the, both the House and the Senate. He has really prioritized housing and homelessness, behavioral health, and continued investment in, in climate action across the state. And we will likely follow his lead. I'm sure there will be some variations from, we never pass exactly what the governor sends us, but I anticipate we'll probably move along the similar themes in the tone he has set for us. On the policy front, Jamie talked about a number of the areas that we'll likely be paying attention to. On the housing front, I, we did last year a lot of bills around building our supply of housing. So how do we, how does the state play a role in encouraging local governments to get out of the way so we can just build more housing? It's not as much of an issue here in Seattle, where we have seen a lot of development, but certainly in other areas of the state, really encouraging a diversity of kinds of housing. So more kind of smaller cottages or fourplexes or duplexes in areas that historically have only had single-family homes. That's great. That will help us build more supply of housing. We know we have more demand for housing. We know the Washington State population just tipped over 8 million people in recent months, and so we need more housing for folks. But it's going to take a while to build that. So this session, I think, will continue on the housing front in a number of ways. I have, for many years, been working on what we do about the rapid escalation of rents in our communities. And we'll continue to work on rent stabilization policy, trying to figure out what's that way we can, you know, reasonably avoid kind of exploitative rent increases without inducing really the sort of negative consequences that we've seen in some older-style rent control, rent stabilization policies around the country. So we've been working for the last couple of years on policy to do that, and we'll continue to work on that. And we will continue to invest in the building of housing, the construction of housing, particularly for people who are experiencing homelessness, for people who are disabled. And more and more, the state has become a partner with local governments and community organizations in also ensuring that we can operate that housing that we build. And so I actually, earlier today, was in a number of different conversations about, okay, well, we put, we invested $400 million in building additional housing in our last session. Okay, when that housing opens, how are we going to operate it? Because the people who are going to be moving in are not going to be able to pay rents that are adequate enough to keep the lights on, keep the water running, et cetera. So that is a new, newer challenge in recent years, and we are continuing to, to work on that. On the behavioral health front, which is an area that I do a lot of work on, one of the bigger investments the governor put in his budget, which we were expecting, is related to the closure of one of the larger behavioral health hospitals in King County in Toquilla, the operator of the Cascade Behavioral Health Hospital close-down operation. And the state worked quickly to purchase that property. And so they, the governor did that after we got out of session last year. So they'll, we'll be working to make sure that we can fully fund the purchase of that building as well as some significant renovations that need to happen. Already, the Department of Social and Human Services has stood up services in that hospital that had been shuttered. And I think we have about 54 patients who are there now. And we're going to continue to sort of ramp up the usage of that. And we also anticipate in the middle of 2024, the University of Washington Behavioral Health Teaching Hospital will be open. This is a project many years in the coming. Actually, Representative Chopp has really been the champion for this vision, not only to provide more behavioral health care for people who desperately need it, but to provide, to create first-in-the-nation institution where we can do world-class training of our next generation of behavioral health providers, everything from psychiatrists to behavioral health assistants, social workers, et cetera. So that is really, really exciting. We've been working on this project for many years. And we will, I think, feel it here in this region, especially when we have this additional capacity and as we start to see professionals being able to increase the rate in which we're training professionals in this field. So those are a couple of areas. I know you all have questions about other specific areas. I can go on and on about health policy, but I'll sort of hold my tongue for now and see where the conversation takes us.
All right. Thanks. We will go to questions and then, of course, stop when Frank gets here, to hear from Frank. But in the meantime, we have some mic runners who are available. And so we'd like to have them look for any questions that you might have.
Senator, I have a question on the initiative that you were talking about.
No, I, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. On the climate commitment initiative, the editorial in the Seattle Times suggested it needs reform or it's going to be approved by the voters. Are there reforms that you would support or that we could expect? Do you think that we need legislative alternative on the ballot at the same time?
Thank you. So this is very complicated. Part of the problem is that we don't know yet what we can do, what the line is. You're talking about a purposeful alternative on the ballot. We don't know what the line is yet for us to be able to reform the Climate Commitment Act without creating an alternative that will get forced onto the ballot. So it seems obvious to me, you know, just speaking for myself as a lawyer, not speaking for the state, that if we, we have some unexpected revenues from the Climate Commitment Act, if we appropriate those, that isn't going to be considered an alternative. On the other hand, there's a lot of question about whether if we link up our market with California and Quebec, have we created an alternative then that would go in front of the voters so that they would choose one or the other? And if that is the case, then I think you can make the case that almost anything that we do with, to change the, to change the Climate Commitment Act could potentially be an alternative. There's a 1971 Attorney General opinion by Slade Gordon that suggests that that is the case. And now we've not had that tested by the courts. But so there's that. I think there's a, you know, there was one, when it looked like there might be just the one initiative on the ballot, because, you know, they've been gathering signatures all year on all six of these initiatives. When it was only the one initiative that looked like it would be on the ballot, then I think some of the advocates were less concerned about having an alternative with that initiative because then you could communicate about how it had been improved by the legislature. I think now there's a lot of concern that because there will be a range of different issues, and we have some polling suggesting that the voters are likely to uphold several of the policies that we passed, that maybe the strongest message to resonate with the public is just vote no on, on everything, right? That this is the, you know, this is a set of very wealthy people that are trying to undo progressive reforms that the legislature has put into effect over the last few years. And the cleanest, easiest-to-digest message is just no. Don't let wealthy people take over our government, right? So that also plays into what can we do, what should we do in terms of the reforms? Now, there are some, I mean, I, you know, I think the thing that's frustrating for me is, I don't know if you could name a complicated, big change that we've made that we didn't need to come back and clean up for, sometimes for years in a row, making tweaks to make it work better for everybody. Two of the bills that I'm working on this next session are exactly that. They're cleanups of bills that I did over the last six years that need some changes and where we have some opportunities to make things better with the benefit of experience. So it, you know, that shouldn't be off the table. But we're, we're going to have to be, to protect the core of the policy, which I think majorities in both the House and the Senate are very committed, and certainly the governor, were very committed to do, is going to require kind of three-dimensional chess playing to figure out what's the best thing for us to do. Is that giving people refunds on their car tabs for a couple of years? That's what some people have proposed. Is it linking up the markets so that the prices of the carbon credits come down? Is it making some policy changes so that agriculture, for example, is excluded the way that it was intended in the original bill? You know, I think you'd find sympathy for all of those things in the legislature. But on the other hand, do we, do we endanger the whole thing? So stay tuned. We're, we're going to do our best, but, but it's, we have a lot of uncertainties that we're trying to navigate at the same time.
About 15 years ago, Seattle City Light had a very successful community solar energy program, which enabled individual homeowners to participate without requiring them to install solar panels on their roof. However, it wasn't continued for lack of state funds. I understand there's a proposed bill to promote more community solar projects throughout the state. Would you support that concept using Climate Commitment Act funds?
Yes. We have done some policymaking on community solar, and I've been tangentially involved in some of that, both as a budget writer, but as someone who is somewhat interested in this, because in my job outside the legislature, working for the downtown emergency service center, helped to develop affordable housing for people who are homeless, and working to try to do that in the most energy-efficient way, and in a couple buildings in recent years, really getting to net zero in our development strategy. And so I've been intrigued by these, the policy around how community solar can work. So yes, and I think we, we have some champions in the legislature. Senator Sharon Schumake, who used to serve with me in the House, and now in the Senate, has been a particular champion on this issue. So there's lots of actually quite exciting ideas. Jamie's comments notwithstanding about some of the maneuvering we may need to do related to Climate Commitment Act. If we're talking about just straight-up appropriations, investments in things, there are a number of fairly exciting proposals. The governor included some in his budget, but many legislators have been talking to groups across the state about how we can make the most strategic investments, not only to have the quickest and biggest impact in terms of climate action, but also how we can best support the communities who are most impacted today by climate change with the most negative, the most negative effects on them. And community solar, therefore, sort of percolates to the top.
There's also somebody over there, so if you want to, they've got to alternate.
Okay, Nicole, you talked about the rent stabilization. How about the real estate excise tax for affordable housing? Can you address that and how that's going to work?
I'd almost think you were a plant with that question.
How did you say that?
Well, well, thank you for asking that question. And I can't wait till Representative Chop gets here, because he is particularly passionate about this, but I think we all are. So the concept of the real estate transfer tax is one in which we would lower taxes, the, the transfer tax that happens when a property is sold, we would lower taxes on the vast majority of Washingtonians on all properties valued under $3 million, and we would add progressive surcharge on those over $3 million. That would generate, the estimates I heard today, about $250 million a biennium, or $125 million a year. Then we would invest those dollars in building more housing for folks, and really focused on building more affordable housing for people experiencing homelessness, seniors, people with disabilities, farmworkers in rural areas. And it seems to make sense. There's a good nexus there on a modest increase in, in revenue on the larger property owners, and a decrease mostly on homeowners, on small property owners. So we are going to push for that. And it, what it would, what it would do would be to essentially create a foundation of steady funding for these programs, because right now, we, the way we develop our capital budget is every two years, we, we sort of assess what we can do. So our Housing Trust Fund, which is our biggest capital construction investment fund in affordable housing, has fluctuated significantly. So some years, it's, well, one year it was zero, some years it's been $20 million. Last year, for this biennium, $400 million. And so if you want to create a steady pipeline of development of units, if you want to be able to tell communities, you can count on the state if you're doing planning, if you're doing your comprehensive planning, and thinking about several years out, and the, and building that development capacity among the community-based organizations, local governments, et cetera, having the stable foundation of funding would be very, very important. So we're pushing for it.
Am I up now? The Seattle Times published an editorial a couple of weeks ago on a school funding matter, and they pointed out, this is an editorial board opinion now, that considerably more money is given to, in the distribution of the school monies to districts. Considerably more money goes to districts that have low poverty levels, that is, rich people, and considerably less money goes to districts where the poverty level is very high. And the numbers are not very clear, but what they do suggest is that something like $1,000 per pupil more is spent in what we'd call wealthier districts than in poorer districts, wealthy and poor, now having to do with parental income in those districts. And I just, it strikes me, when I read that, I thought that's, there are a couple of qualities of that problem that jump out at me. Number one, damage to those kids in those districts that are, they're not getting enough money is expectable. We know enough mountains of research show that money does matter. Smaller classes, better teaching, better materials, better facilities, there's no doubt about that at all. So there is expected damage here, and it's not just trivial damage. This can be very substantial, and sometimes irreversible damage to these kids, because failure to develop basic skills in early years follows the kids along as they go through school. Some of it can be made up, but not all of it. So it's serious damage that's expectable. And the most shocking thing is that if you think about it, the children who are affected by this are totally, completely, wholly blameless. You know, you can adopt social policies, you can resist social policies to increase the wealth of their parents, and you hear the, well, if those parents had worked harder, or if they'd made different life choices, if they'd done this and that, they wouldn't be as poor as they were. You can't say any of that about the children. They are wholly blameless. So if you've got a situation in which you can expect serious damage to blameless children, it seems to me something needs to be done, and that's what the editorial called for. The executive branch can do something. The superintendent can adjust the formulas to help a little bit, the governor can help a little. But everybody knows about school finance, and until the legislature owns the problem, nothing of any significant magnitude is going to happen. So my question to you is, is there anything cooking in this coming session to address problems of that kind? Sorry for the length. Welcome, Frank.
Why don't you, I'll address that, and then we'll go to Frank. So this is a super complicated problem that has its roots all the way back in the funding changes that were made in the early 70s. Part of the, what is at the core of this is that it's not as if Bellevue gets more per student than Seattle does, or than Tacoma does. But what happens in the formulas is that there are adjustments for where teacher pay was historically. There are adjustments for the cost of living in, so there's regionalization for different schools. And then there's also an adjustment for an experience factor. And that was, I think, what the Times was really focused on, was that we paid more experienced, we paid districts that have a lot of experienced teachers more than we pay districts that have new and inexperienced teachers. And so there is the potential for compounding. I think, you know, it's clear that if, a lot, I would say, almost everything that we did, when we did the McCleary reforms, starting in 2009, was to focus on how we can try to achieve equity for kids who are coming up through the system. So we know, for example, that the key milestone is for third graders, by the time they finish third grade, to be able to read fluently, and to be able to do their arithmetic. And, you know, some kids come to kindergarten doing those things pretty well, and others don't know their letters and numbers when they arrive, right? So we paid for all-day kindergarten across the state. We paid for small class sizes, 17 kids, so that if you have kids with those deficits, the teachers have a chance to make those up by the time they get to third grade, and give kids a much better chance to succeed through the system. Does that mean that we've resolved everything? Absolutely not. So I think the most significant thing that I'm aware of, Nicole and Frank may be hearing some other things, the Teachers Union, and I think the governor included in his budget, are talking about a significant increase in pay for paraeducators, and I think along 300 million bucks, or something like that, that's, yeah, that's suggested in the budget, $3 an hour for them. That would go a long way, actually, toward stabilizing the workforce for special education, and helping districts pay the actual costs that they're incurring in special education. So I think it would be a good step. That's, for a supplemental budget, that's a pretty big move. I don't think that there's any likelihood, honestly, that in a 60-day session, we're going to be revisiting education finance in, in any really significant way. But it is a topic that we will need to pay attention to, for as long as any of us are around looking at it. Thank you. And now, you know, oh, Bill's going, Bill's going to do an intro, so I won't have to do, it was funny, I was saying, I, so I was at Hamilton International Middle School this morning, and did the first three classes, and then Frank was supposed to get there for 1:00, and he wasn't there, the teacher was getting anxious. So I, so I called him up, he said, I'm two minutes, I'm right up front, two minutes, I'll be there. So I started talking about, the kids were, you know, all gathered there in the library, so I started talking about Frank. And, boy, by the time he got there, I got a little choked up, because I, what I, well, what I, what I just realized is what, you know, I look back on my 18 years, his time stretch is a little bit longer than that, but I just realized how many, how many things that we have gotten a chance to collaborate on, and it's, I am very proud to be represented by you, so thank you for being here.
There's no, there's no need, there's no need for further deduction. Here he is.
I agree with everything Jamie said. Well, for those who didn't hear, I agree with everything Jamie said. I guarantee you, you will be a better audience than eighth graders in international school and middle. By far, unless you ask questions about the color of my hair, and how it used to be when I was younger. I said, you guys are much the lucky people, you shouldn't, just enjoy it while you got the hair. That was the level of intellectual discourse I had this afternoon. But thank you, I really enjoyed your choking up, Jamie. I feel so proud to be a member with you, with Nicole. I mean, you're very fortunate to have these two in the legislature representing them. I'll tell you, it's just amazing. Yeah, give my applause. So the other question I have for you is, how many of you protested things when you were younger, and stopped traffic going across the University Bridge? I figured that, that's actually about what I thought you'd do. So I didn't kill anybody coming over here, I didn't throw anybody off the bridge, but I got stuck on the University Bridge protest. I don't know, did you announce that?
What was your name, Brad?
I have no idea, I was protesting, that protest, but, who knows? I don't know. So what am I supposed to talk about, Bill?
Yourself.
Oh, myself.
What you're doing, what's going to happen in the legislature?
What am I doing? Well, a lot of great stuff, actually. We're really pleased that we've just completed our newsletter, and you'll be seeing that in a couple of weeks, they're talking about what we did this last session, but also what we hope to do this next session. In the short time since I'm late, I'll just pick one or two things. One is, how many of you are aware of restrictive real estate covenants? Yeah, if you actually read the real estate covenants, when you buy a house and you have it in the deed, many of those in, actually across the state, had language in the real estate covenants on homeowners' deed of trust, or whatever, it said, only white people can live here. I mean, it's in writing, it's just grotesque. I mean, now that, all that was going on for decades, but it finally got ruled unconstitutional at the end of the 1960s. The problem has been going on for decades, in fact, even more. So there's this huge generational wealth gap in our community, where basically, white folks have more wealth in terms of homeownership than black folks. And it varies with other groups, but it was very clear in writing, only white people, which I think is very shameful. And the thing about it is, the state of Washington was complicit in all this. We not only recorded those documents, to put it in the file, we also defended that practice, saying that it was the right of people to discriminate like that, and we did that in front of the State Supreme Court. So in my opinion, we're liable. Therefore, the proposal to address that is the covenant homeownership account. And it's more of a, sort of a tort claim, where harm was done, we need to do something to make up for that, as opposed to affirmative action, which is more about preferences and things like that. So guess what? With the help of Nicole and Jamie, we passed that legislation. It's the first-in-the-nation, and it's going to invest about $2 billion over the next generation to help first-time homebuyers who were directly affected, or their descendants, to give them significant down payment assistance to buy homes. And so it's a very historic thing, first-in-the-nation by far, and it's, it's high, high time we do something about it. I mean, I've heard people point out that issue about the discrepancy and the discrimination and all the rest for years, and so we did it. Now, the question is, if you go out and try to buy a home now, can you find something you could afford, of any race, no matter what you are, or who you are, where you came from? I mean, the reality is, now we have to implement it, which means we have to have affordable starter homes, which is still difficult in Seattle, but we're working on it to identify specific sites and specific models of, you know, condos, or smaller starter homes, et cetera. So that's a big step forward, and the Democrats are very proud about that. The Republicans said that they sort of liked it, but didn't like that we raised a little assessment. And the assessment was actually on recording the documents. So going forward, we're going to tack on a little money to pay a fee to fund the down payment assistance. So anyway, that's a great step forward. In other things, though, I think that we're making real progress on this whole notion of having a home, which to me, having a home is a fundamental human right, for God's sake. I mean, it just tears me apart anytime I see any homeless people on the street suffering and dying. That should not be allowed. And so we are investing a lot in various different ways to provide more housing for people in need, but also with this component of helping connect these very obvious ideas. I mean, sometimes doing the most obvious things are the most revolutionary things. I mean, imagine connecting the notion of housing with healthcare. And we're doing that. We passed Apple Health and Homes, which is basically making a connection with this simple premise of a, essentially a prescription for a home. Now, should I ask them, how many of them have prescriptions? I don't know, I think they're probably 100%, just guessing, I don't know, I'm on prescription myself, what the hell. But the notion is that if you are chronically homeless, and have a major medical condition like mental illness, substance use disorder, or a major physical disability, then you shall have a home as part of your medical treatment. Now, we've done that, go ahead, applaud. I wasn't sure you were going to applaud it for me being so damn late, so I'm sorry about that. But the point is, is that we have to do what's obvious. They have a medical condition. Everybody nowadays says, oh, of course, we understand mental illness. Now, a little bit more in terms of substance use disorder. Well, what are we going to do about it? Those folks are literally suffering and dying on the street. Now, Nicole, with her agency, and other agencies similar to that, are doing a lot already, but we got to take it to the next level. And what's great about it, have you ever heard of Medicaid? Okay, we finally convinced Medicaid to provide at least six months of federal money for the housing. Yeah, yeah, so, but that's not all, we want to go make it more permanent for when, how long you need it. Anyway, I could go on, how many hours, Bill? I can go on quite, I have many other things to talk about, but I'll leave it to those two things. I can go on quite, I have many other things to talk about, but I'll leave it to those two things. We have to take what's obvious in society in the case of racism and doing something about it, in the case of human need, and then also doing something about it. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, we're supposed to end at five, but I'm hoping that we can go a little further. There is going to, there is an event outside that begins, actually it's begun already, a Hanukkah celebration. And so after five, there will be a Klezmer band, which will, might, I hope not drown us out. But I'm, but also I promised Sam to please, when you do leave, leave quietly, because that is going on over there. Now, that having been said, why don't we ask some more questions?
One over here. Hi, Tom Spear here. So thank all three of you for the really hard work that you've done. We really appreciate all these good things. Back to the environment for a moment. I'm very interested in the RAP Act, which didn't quite make it. This is the notion that makers of materials, particularly packaging, should be responsible for their disposal, because at the moment, we're drowning in the trash that's produced. The recycling programs, as brave as they are, are really inadequate for this job. And many municipalities are actually not recycling anymore because of the expense. So I'm wondering what the prospects are for getting the RAP Act passed.
We'll start the RAP Act, yes, I'm supporting that. There's been a lot of questions about it. One question I have for you, have you ever been to Fremont? All right, remember the Fremont Recycling Station number one? How many of you were on the curb collection routes that Armin Napoleon Stapanyan created when he was running the Fremont Recycling Station? Anybody here? Oh, that's surprising, because we plotted to build support for recycling at that point. And so we literally created 29 home curb site collection routes. And we made sure that every single council member on the Seattle City Council was on one of those things. To sort of shame them into recycling. So that was then. Now we have a different situation where we've done quite a bit to advance recycling for obvious reasons, for God's sake. But this RAP Act is, it tended to take it a step further. The concern about the RAP Act is people's concern about it driving up the cost for average working folks who have to put another dime or whatever on the deposit. I'm not sure about the latest proposal, if that's still the case, because this is from last session. But I think people are pulling it together, answering the questions, responding to legitimate concerns. And then I think the chance of it passing is pretty good.
I think that the, those two ideas have now been separated into two different bills. And the RAP Act is becoming the re-RAP Act with some extended producer responsibility and then there will separately be a bottle deposit bill. It's interesting, we just got in our inboxes today a report about the success of recycling efforts around the country in different states and what regulatory structures were conducive to the highest levels of recycling. And that report suggested that having a bottle bill is actually pretty important to the success of high participation in recycling. I'm not sure that we'll have the votes for that this year, but I think there's a good prospect for the remaining pieces of the bill to move forward.
Hello, my question is in regards to domestic violence and that I think that it is, that it's... And that I think that it's being falsified often. And it seems like which parent makes it down to the police station first is the one that's right. And for the other parent, that they have to, that they have to dig their way out of the accusation when there's not been any proof. And why is it that a parent is being separated from his child? And there's never been any evidence.
I got nominated for this one. So look, I think we, we know some things from our, from the research that we have. One of those things is that domestic violence is often a precursor to much worse violence. It's one of the reasons that we now take away firearms from people who are convicted of even misdemeanor domestic violence. Because there is such a strong association with later intimate partner violence and, you know, strangulation, murder. What that means, because the process isn't, the process isn't complete, is that sometimes we are erring on the side of separating people and disturbing relationships between parents and children. It can happen, it can happen with mothers, not only with fathers. But there, you know, there is that, there is that risk. I think we are, our public policy has generally been to try to follow the science and the data and to do our best to keep people safe. And so, you know, we have to recognize that there are some, that there are collateral consequences from that policy. But I think the evidence that I've seen suggests that in the aggregate, that keeps more people safe than pursuing the other policy. So the question is, if there's never any proof, why aren't people allowed to reconnect with their children? They are. If there's never any proof, I mean, so this, we're talking about, you know, so we had a colleague who is an elected official, who was accused of domestic violence. He was put in jail mandatorily overnight while the investigation happened. As it turns out, it was his wife who had, who suffers from alcohol use disorder and had initiated the violence. You know, so it was a very rough night for him. It was a rough few days until the truth of that got ferreted out. And then after that, he's back in custody of his kids and she's in treatment. But in the meantime, the presumption is trying to make sure that the partners and the kids are safe. So, you know, this is, this is often the case with the legal system. It is kind of the nature of what do we have to do in the meantime to make sure that, that there's no more damage done.
Right. I want briefly to go back to the comment that Frank made. I don't know how many of you know other people in the room, perhaps? H. Jack Geiger, do you know that name? He was one of the founders of the Physicians for Human Rights. In the 60s, he wrote prescriptions as a doctor. He said, "What you need is a house." It was in Boston, he got in a lot of trouble for that, nobody paid attention. I think this is the first time I've heard where people are actually putting their, our money where our mouth is. I think that's a spectacular breakthrough. Now, I also want to, this is not directly about any specific work you're doing, but more generally, my worry about this country being split in half. That Washington is predictably Democratic. Most states are predictably one or the other. I think that's more the problem than the solution. Where we are becoming a nation divided. And I wondered if there's anything, and you have more access to people throughout the state being in the legislature than we do. Is there any way in which your work speaks to that issue in a way that's helpful in moving us forward as a nation?
There's a delay here. Yeah, happy to, thank you, Andy, I'm happy to take that one. So, you know, I haven't kept super careful. I probably introduced now around 120 bills over the course of 18 years. You can definitely count on your fingers the number that don't have a Republican co-sponsor. And I think that is a super important discipline for me, always to try to find common ground with people that I'm working with. So I'll tell you right now, I'm, I'll just, let me tell you the story of one, one bill that I'm working on. The only one that I'm planning to prefile that I have not yet dropped. So you may have seen a story in The Times last June or so about a woman who has a, she's a tenant. She has some national management company that manages her, manages her apartment and owns, I think, the apartment that she lives in. And they had some kind of global system for setting the rents that has escalated rents really quickly. And there was an attempt to put together a class action lawsuit against the, this company, the landlord. And she could not participate because in the fine print of her lease was a waiver of any right ever to participate in a class action against her landlord. And I read that and I just thought, well, man, that is just crazy. There is no way that people should be limited in the remedies that they have when they're appropriate. Kind of on a separate note, Nicole and Frank and I have all gotten some, have you ever heard, gotten messages from some people about a new issue that has apparently arisen with these fancy downtown towers of condos called valet garbage? Have you ever heard of this? Valet garbage. So in the valet garbage world, what happens is that the landlord now forces you to use a service to carry your sack of garbage from your front door down to the garbage chute at the end of the hall. And then they charge you $200, $300, $400 a month for the privilege of having somebody carry your garbage to the end of the hall. And it's, yeah, how much do they get paid? And it's not optional, right? You can't opt out of this fee that just gets tacked on. So anyway, I got kind of exercised about, about these things and started putting together a bill about that. As we dug into it and I talked to some of the, talked to some of the tenant advocates, they raised some other issues, you know, one of the things that we were worried about is arbitra, on the class action thing is arbitration. So the Federal Arbitration Act actually prohibits people from excluding arbitration as a dispute resolution alternative. But wow, that's tough for tenants too, because it's most often the case with arbitration that you have to pay half the fee upfront for the arbitration. And if you're in a dispute with your landlord about whether they've done something right or the rent, you know, with the rent, like really, are you going to come up with $1,250 to pay half of the arbitrator's fee before we start? So anyway, I started putting together this bill and talked to tenant advocates about that. And, you know, I guess in one world, where, in a world where you have Democrats in control of both houses and a Democratic governor, that could be the end of the story. But then I reached out to my friends at the landlord association, starting with the Washington Multi-Family Housing Association, which are the big landlords, and said, you know, "These are pretty egregious practices. Do you really want to be defending that? Don't you think we could come to some agreement about that?" And miracle of miracles, they agreed. And so we're having a meeting tomorrow to figure out exactly what the language is. With, armed with that, I went to a Republican from the 25th District, Senator Chris Gildon, and asked him if he would be willing to be the second sponsor on the bill. And, you know, and by the way, I had to take out one piece of the, what had been suggested by the tenant advocates originally, but, you know, that's the legislative process, right? And I think the result is, from all of that, that we're going to have a tenant bill. Often, you know, the landlord-tenant issues are some of the most divisive things that we have in the legislature, where we're going to have broad bipartisan support and it's going to be able to go into law and start helping people. And, you know, I guess I raise that just to say that the stories you hear about in the papers and on TV are often about the most divisive issues. But last year, we passed 485 bills and probably 460 of them had bipartisan support, right? We actually, one of the things that I think we all work hard to do is to talk with our colleagues. And we can't always agree. I mean, I give up on gun stuff. I can never get any Republicans to help on any gun responsibility or gun violence prevention issue, or mostly not. But on most of the issues that are in front of us, there is common ground to be found if you just have the will to do that. And, and so I, I think we do. And that's one of the reasons why our legislature works well.
Can I just add to that? Well, this is an example of the brilliance of Jamie Peterson. He not only thinks this stuff through, but reaches out to the other side. I mean, just spectacular, I mean, just amazing. I on the other hand realize that legislators don't get paid much, so I'm willing to take your garbage down the hall. Getting on this subject, though, we'll get, just give me a sec. When I was speaker for 20-some years, I basically had a theme of working together for one in Washington. So we reached out all across the state to figure out what the rest of the state really needed. Whether it be agricultural issues or investments in local community colleges or a medical center over at WSU campus in Spokane to proactively bridge this supposed divide. So that at the end, at least they didn't hate us. Whereas in other states, they are just at war with each other. The spite and the pettiness is just, I can't believe it. That's not good politics for Democrats. Yes, we're in the majority right now and I think we will be for many years, but we can't overplay that hand. We have to reach out to people across the state because they're taking care of business in their own communities and they need to be involved. So that helps a lot as well, to have the right theme to emphasize. So it's kind of things that we can agree to.
I had a question on gun control, maybe Jamie has already answered it. But there seems to be tremendous availability of weapons still on the street. Is there any action in the legislature to try to reduce the availability of these weapons?
I guess the first thing is, if you're in a hole, stop digging. Which is why we banned the sale of high-capacity magazines and assault, and that was in 2022 and in 2023, we banned the sale of assault weapons. You know, we have a, we have a huge challenge that we're facing, both because in our state constitution, you know, regardless of what you think about the Second Amendment, our state constitution, Article 1, Section 24 guarantees the individual right to keep and bear arms. And, you know, we've got now an really activist US Supreme Court that is laying waste to a lot of work that folks have done to try to prevent gun violence across the country. There's a terrifying case that they have in front of them right now about a domestic violence perpetrator who's claiming that the Second Amendment means that he should not have his guns taken away from him. And, you know, I think from, based on the oral argument, it's likely that they're going to find some way of upholding that. But literally, the Bruin decision from Clarence Thomas said that if it wasn't the law in 1789, when the Second Amendment was adopted, that there's no historical precedent, you can't do the law now. No sort of balancing test or whatever, you know. So we are, on the one hand, I think, trying to be aggressive about protecting communities from gun violence and on the other hand, living in fear that something that we pass can wind up being the basis for the US Supreme Court unwinding all sorts of other good things that we've tried to do. So that's part of, that's part of the reality for the world. That said, I'll just tell you, there are two significant bills that are in process right now in terms of gun violence prevention. One is a bill that will require a permit to purchase and that will involve a mandatory waiting period before people can actually take a firearm. waiting period before people can actually take a firearm home. So that's a, that would be a positive change. The second is a bill that is a follow-up on a liability bill that I did this last year, and it's a manufacturer, a gun retailer code of conduct. So it would impose a requirement of heightened security, gun safes, you know, how the retailers store things, training for their employees to make sure that they know how, what the law is about who can purchase firearms and how to follow it. And then if you fail to do those things, then potentially, you're putting yourself at, at risk for lawsuits. We are also going to require insurance, a certain amount of insurance coverage for those businesses. And the carriers, I think, will be a very, very important enforcement mechanism because they're going to be in there, if they're going to put an insurance policy on a business, they're going to be making sure that the business has good controls in place. So, you know, I think we, of necessity, are most focused on how we can make sure that law-abiding, responsible people can still enjoy the constitutional right that they have, but making sure that we take away any possibility that folks who are going to use guns for any ill purpose do not have access to them. Thank you.
I think we have time for one more, so.
Well, perhaps it's appropriate because I want to ask a question that is not related to the legislature, and that is that obviously, there's a lot of support for Biden in, at Horizon House. And what I would like to ask the elected officials, what do you recommend that we do beyond contributing money to the campaign?
Obviously, everyone here is going to vote. I think, yes, we are very concerned about what's happening at the top of the ticket, right, for, for our 2024 presidential election. I think, you know, chances are pretty good that, that President Biden's going to succeed here in Washington State. I think it's important to talk with folks who you know in other states about the importance of voting, and I think to also look at these other races that are going to be on the ballot. A lot of the, you know, we here in Washington State weathered some not-great policy at the federal level, and I would say Senator Peterson just talked about the United States Supreme Court. I think that is a threat to us all, but Washington State has really been the backstop on some of these, I would say, bad decisions coming out of the courts. So like overturning Roe v. Wade is bad for us across the country, but here in Washington State, the fact that we have legislators and a governor at the state level who not only held the line on reproductive health access, but added protections in, in the wake of the Supreme Court decision is, is essential. So we're very concerned about what's happening at the federal level, but it is, I think, as important, or in some ways more important for us as Washingtonians to be engaged in these state-level races as well. So you already heard about the initiatives, so when you get that message to vote no on all of them, make sure you talk with folks because it is really, it's not, these are not inconsequential things. This is really an unwinding of the investments and the protections that we have put in place for Washingtonians. The capital gains tax funds early learning and K-12 education. It brings us closer to the vision of universal pre-K in our state, and if it goes away, we are moving significantly backwards. The conversations about equitable funding for our public schools, we will be set back significantly. And so there is that. The WACARES, Long-Term Care Program, if that gets repealed, Washington State is the first in the nation. This is essentially the biggest expansion of Social Security at the state level to make sure that working people today have the hope of having their long-term care needs met when they need it. And to see that potentially unwound is a huge step backwards. Climate Commitment Act, it is, people, not just here in Washington State, across the country, they say it is the best-in-the-nation policy for reducing carbon in the environment, and that could be unwound all next November. So yes, we often, when it's a presidential election year, we get very focused on the drama of those, you know, that CNN and, and all the news channels play it incessantly, continually, but we need to be focused on some of the stuff closer to home as well. So just want to focus us on that.
That, but I don't want to do it on videotape.
With that, with that said, are there anything else either of the three of you would like to add?
You know, I, I guess, let us just close by saying thank you to all of you. It is such a privilege to represent this district. This district is the most highly educated, the most left-leaning district in the, in the entire state. You know, it's, I think, there are a lot of our colleagues who sweat about voting the right way and have to worry about when they vote for the Climate Commitment Act, or they vote for the long, WACARES program, the Long-Term Care Program, or vote for the capital gains tax. Gosh, is it, is this going to cost me my next election? Is this going to be the centerpiece of a mailer? For the entire time that I have been in the legislature, I feel confident that when I decide what I think the right thing is for my constituents and for the state, that I can vote that way. I don't have to think any further about it. It's just a one-question deal. And it is a giant privilege to have constituents like you who are engaged and aligned with us. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you all for being here today. We, we love this work because of the people that we represent, and so it's a great privilege. Thank you.
With that, with that said, and I just, I do want to point out the, the two folks over there wanting to sign up you for further engagement in Olympia, as well as learning more about the, the legal voters, and also remember that go quietly, because there's a, there is a celebration going on out there, and hopefully that you, we will see many of you at the, at the buffet. Thank you very much.